Well, good afternoon. Welcome to session three of our viewing and discussion about the Chosen Season Two. And so today we will be watching the third video. We'll review the homework assignments for the second session to start. We'll watch the third video and then we'll discuss the video and next week we'll do all do the homework for the third session and that starts on page forty-nine. So when you get home today, you're looking to do the start to work for, starting on page forty-nine. And my name is John Barton. I'm pastor at Trinity and associate pastor here at Grace in Hartford City. And we're in the Grace Annex of the Church. This is our two-thirty session, which is available on Zoom. And for those of you who will watch this by finding it online after it's already been recorded, I cannot show or include the video of the Chosen Session or Season Two, or any season for that matter, and post it to YouTube. So when we get to that point, I'm going to pause the recording so you will not get the session. So if you want to watch it on the screen right now as a place where you can watch it, some of those choices are free. Some of them are not free, but you might already subscribe to them. And you can watch it on YouTube, which is not on there, but YouTube would also be free. Watch the Chosen.TV is free and the Roku Channel, if you have some sort of Roku device and/or if your TV has some sort of Roku device, you could get it that way free as well. And so today we're going to, as I said, do session three. And Pastor Jeannie's on vacation, so she won't be joining us. She's the senior pastor at Grace right next door here. So the video this week is only thirty-five minutes long, so we'll have a little bit more discussion than we have had the previous couple of weeks. And does anybody have any questions before we get started? I'd like to offer an on-air thank you for Rita for bringing us some crickies. No, that's not right.
Rookies.
There. Rookies that are some sort of some sort of improper cross between brownies and cookies, but they turned out pretty good, I have to admit. They tasted really well.
Designer bars.
Designer bars. There you go. So.
They're not. They're not homemade?
You want them there? No, I put them in the oven.
So she baked them. So we appreciate that. So if you want coffee or tea or there's water cold in the refrigerator, warm on top, and then there's key and hot cocoa and cider and coffee over here. If you want any of that stuff, if you need to get up, feel free. If you're watching at home, I won't know, so get up too. So and don't be afraid to ask questions. We had, I thought, a really good discussion last week. So I hope we can continue to have good discussion and we can continue to strive to learn more about Jesus and what he meant to those people that were watching, but also what he means in our lives. So is there anyone who would like to offer our opening prayer?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Why not? Okay. Lord, it's always good, well, it's commanded, strongly suggested, that we assemble ourselves together and not to forsake that as some do, because not only do we learn from others, but we have an opportunity to share with others, all for the benefit for all. Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to take a closer look, a more intimate look into the life of Jesus and his disciples, and we may see ourselves in some of them as well. Thank you for those who watch here and there and everywhere with the technology that we have. Blessed, coming together, assembling ourselves, yes, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Ron. All right. So today we're going to start with our homework and our homework came from session one. And that's right, isn't it?
That's it, too.
Okay, so, oh, yeah, session two, right where my book is open.
You were just testing us.
Well, apparently so. And I failed. I was testing you and I failed, so. And I think, oh, Rayanne, in the evening session, missed the first session. And so when I told her, she said, well, that's the video that we watched. And I said, yeah, we either study ahead or we study after we see the video. So one way or the other. So this.
You know, I discussed that with my husband, because normally my brain says, read this and then watch it. But I love the fact that it's opposite, because now when I'm reading it, I can put it to actual action and see who's doing it and what's being done. Yeah, I like it this way.
I thought, I like it too, because you read it and, okay, I read it last week and, oh, that's who that guy was. Yeah. And then, of course, I like that you start out with the with the pictures and Nathaniel and Philip. And I highlighted something about Philip. John explicitly named Nathaniel among the apostles. That's in John twenty-one, two, though the name Nathaniel does not appear other or does not otherwise appear in the four Gospels, rather they named Bartholomew in their list of the apostles. Doesn't necessarily make it easier for us two thousand years later, when we're trying to keep track of who's who.
I've never seen a story that people are called so many different names. And why did they change their names? Okay.
Is it just a matter of how like we have a first, middle, and last, and they didn't? So now they're kind of putting them together?
Well, they did have that to some extent, because if you go to Acts, they talked about the person who wrote the Gospel Mark, they called him John Mark in Acts.
Oh, yeah.
And Simon and Peter, and you know, so it's not the family name that we're seeing, but it's other names and like Thomas was also called Didymus. And Didymus means twin. And so Simon was a twin, not Simon, Thomas was a twin. And a lot of times they didn't expect the smaller twin to live, so they didn't even give him a name. They just called him Twit. And only until they got older did they actually give him a name, because he didn't expect the smaller one to live. Twins were not very.
But that's not relevant to.
It's not relevant to anything. It's just, it's just that he has a second name, but his second name was more of a description of who he was when he was born.
So Thomas's, is Tom, Thomas's brothers never mentioned, is it?
No.
Okay.
Not, not that I.
I was more confused.
And so James, there were two Judases. And so sometimes they talk about Judas and they identify him as the betrayer or the thief or you know, in different ways. And then the other Judas, other than he existed, doesn't really have much of a role. So I just think it's kind of interesting trying to keep track of the names and.
Well, Simon the Zealot, later on, and maybe he's not, Jesus causing Z or Zeke. And I'm going, who is that? And I think in here to find his picture, and then I'm going, oh, yeah, well, that makes sense.
It happens all the time. I've done enough humanology. There's some guy named John Henry Lancy. You know, to me, John Lancy, whatever I call him, Henry. My father was Lee Ira Floyd Storms. I did not know Lee. He hated Lee Ira, which was a combination of Leroy and Ira, two grandfathers. He's always Floyd, though I was, you know, older in life. So Nathaniel or not, Paul of you, it could be very natural and very normal. It's just one of those things.
Well, and of course, we also remember that Peter was Cephas.
Oh, no. I did not remember.
So he had three names, Simon, Peter, and Cephas, because Peter was rock in one language and Cephas is rock in another language, I think, between Greek and Aramaic, but I'm not certain about that. No. So they had several names and, you know, if you ever try to visit someone in the hospital that's a friend, sometimes you go to the hospital and you find out that the name that you know them by is not the name that is first on their medical records. And so Lloyd Hall's first name was Wilbur.
Oh, I did not know that.
And so if you go to the hospital, I went to the hospital to see Lloyd and they, with HIPAA, you never know how much digging they'll do. And so in this case, I had his address and so they could see his address and they said, oh, well, we got him as Wilbur. Okay. And I know there's at least one person in here that has a different name that they go by. That's probably their real first name. I won't mention any names.
What is your first name?
James.
James. Okay. Well, my husband's first name is Lee.
Iacoca?
We did have a Chrysler at one time. My dad's name was Everett Leroy, and they always knew him by Roy.
So we're really not that much different.
What were the three names that Simon had?
Seaman. No, I inadvertently, Cephas and Simon and Peter.
Now, Jesus called Simon Peter.
He, Jesus gave Simon the name of Peter.
That's in.
And that's kind of traditional in the Bible to happen too.
Yes.
You know, because Jacob meant deceiver. And he, God gave him a new name, Israel. And God changed the names of both Abram and Sarah.
Just the first.
So.
Don't they do that in the Catholic Church too?
Okay.
They used to anyway. Catholic Church would give people a new name.
Are you asking me?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. Are you from the Catholic Church?
I am, but I have not attended Catholic Church in many years.
I've heard of it.
Yeah.
They choose us. We choose our confirmation name.
Or you choose your own.
Mine is Pamela Marie Teresa Pajes, is when I was a child, but. Okay, the reason I left the Catholic Church, a lot of reasons, but this one was the final straw. I wasn't in church that day. And a friend of ours was, and a family came in and it was hotter than places out, hotter than blazes. And this family came in and they had on shorts, because they were going to the beach. And the priest told them to leave.
Wow.
And I said, I'm done, because God or Jesus, whoever, would not care what you wear or anything. So I haven't been back to the Catholic Church. That and the fact that I got divorced and they didn't agree to the reason I got divorced. And the reason I got divorced is because my daughter got hit by my husband. He hit her. I said, I'm done. So I can't answer your question on some.
But I heard that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I do have confirmation name.
Yep. So if we were to look at our opening reading, did anybody have any questions or anything that they wanted to discuss? You know, this starts out as those who mourn. And this is another one of the attitudes we looked at, another one of the blessings. And it's from Matthew five, four, blessed are those who mourn.
I had never really thought about mourning in a different way like Nathaniel did. To me, mourning goes with a death of a person. So I had not really thought about mourning in the way that I look at it now.
So how do you say Nathaniel was mourning?
He was mourning the loss of who he wanted to become.
And that's, this is the architect that we saw last week that was talking about, you know, and then he died. As a bartender, I don't know if they called him a bartender, but the server there said, when Nathaniel said, well, yeah.
By the way, that's me.
That's me. Yeah, I kind of figured that out.
See, I probably wouldn't have. Who are you talking about? Do I know him?
So what do you suppose it meant to Nathaniel when he met Jesus? And Jesus said, I see you. I saw you.
That had to be mind-blowing.
And he was totally surprised.
Yeah.
Have we met?
Yeah.
Well, and, yeah, when did, when did you see? I mean, that's a very reasonable question. And then what does Jesus tell him?
When you are under the fig tree.
When you are under the fig tree. And so Nathaniel knows that he was, at least as it's portrayed here, we don't actually know from the scripture why Nathaniel was sitting under the fig tree. But it, I always imagined that Jesus looked over and there he was, you know, and it's fun. But you know, this is a much more reasonable interpretation, because this is a life-changing event for Nathaniel, and it had to be something more than, oh, yeah, Jesus glanced over and saw me. But so.
I think it was significant that Jesus saw who he was. It wasn't just a glance at him. He knew.
I know.
Because he knew his potential. He said, this is a person.
He knew his life.
Deceiver, whatever.
Yeah, not deceit. Yeah.
He knew, but that must have been really significant, because Nathaniel was feeling pretty worthless at the time when he lost his job and.
Well, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it was by coincidence who Jesus picked. It was almost like he was looking for personalities in people so they would fulfill and have a part in the group.
Well, I think you're right. And I think you said something earlier that it changed how you thought about mourning, but it also changes, it also adds another aspect of Jesus healing. That, you know, we, yeah, the physical healing, we all talk about that, but this is just important, because this is an entire being healing, you know, healing him in body and or in mind and soul.
No self-worth.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he couldn't have much self-worth after.
Well, he's going to commit suicide.
I did. That's what I, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, as they were working through or as he, they were working through, he's tearing up and burning these things that mattered to him and he's crying out to God and kind of complaining a little bit. And I was trying to do this for you. Somewhere in here it talks about, and I know I highlighted it, but I don't see it right here. He took, they talk about perhaps he had a little bit of arrogance and pride that was coming into it, because the things that he were doing, was doing as an architect in some ways were a little bit self-serving.
Yep.
And, you know, he could have been doing it all for God, but he was concerned about the recognition that he would lose as well.
It seemed like they mentioned, maybe it was in the, the video, that somebody said something about him being a Jew and being in the, getting that position was unusual.
That was in the movie. That was in the movie.
That probably gave.
Prestige.
Yeah. He was the first. And, yep.
But he might have really struggled to get where he did too, you know? So because he was the first, and he was sure. So, I mean, you know.
To lose all of that.
To lose all that after struggling so hard would be difficult. But then to see when Jesus said to him, I saw you under the fig tree. That's got to be like, like I said, mind-blowing, that somebody eventually, when he figured that, you know, realized for sure that was him, that somebody actually knows what I went through to get where I am. That's a pretty good thing.
Yeah. All right. So on page thirty-five, there's a sentence in, oh, it's the about halfway down that goes like this. We know God has the power to change and fix and protect and provide in exactly the ways we want him to. So when he doesn't, it calls into question his love for us and even his very character. Do we ever question God because he doesn't answer our prayers exactly the way we want?
Yeah, sure.
And when?
And when? And and I was, when I was reading this, I was remembering that there's another aspect that sometimes we don't actually ask. And we just expect God is going to provide without us asking. And yet God wants us to ask. Why does God want us to ask?
Well, for one thing, we're acknowledging that we know he can do that.
Right. Who he is. And he also wants us to acknowledge our dependence on him.
When I read that, what came through to me was that when I say my prayers at night and I thank him for the patience that he has, that I asked for a lot to help me with my patience. And then it dawned on me of the patience he has to have with me.
Absolutely.
And that's for sure.
Well, I was saying, you know, Rock, I don't know Pam well enough to.
So I guess there's, as Rita know, there's something I have been really praying for, for a very long time, in patience. And God's time, Pam. And that's what I'm learning, you know? If it's going to happen, it's going to be when he wants it to happen, not necessarily when I, and I just have to have patience.
And the likelihood that God is going to do exactly what we want is very remote, because he has the big picture and we don't.
Oh, yeah. That's why at times I wish he'd just go, it's never going to happen, Pam. Never going to happen. Move on. Move on.
And this all reminded me of a verse from James that, that in talking about prayer, where James tells us that we have not, because we ask none. And what comes after that? Anybody know what's the next portion of that verse? And when we ask, we ask for selfish reasons. And so sometimes we're sitting there waiting for God to answer our prayers, and God's not going to answer a prayer, at least in any way that we would consider to be affirmative, if it's self-seeking and to make us us look better. I mean, when we look at our Nathaniel here, you know, he was kind of, he wanted to bring glory to God, but he was more than happy if a little bit of that glory rubbed off on him. And he's sitting there under the tree screaming at God about not getting what he wants and why are you doing this to me? And probably not going to get an answer that he likes to those questions.
I don't think we have that broad of a spectrum ourselves. You know, Nathaniel had all of the right reasons. I thought he had worked hard. He was going to give glory to the God and everything. And that's where his focus was. He didn't, I mean, sure, there was a part of him that that was prideful because of what he had accomplished, but I don't think we see that sometimes. I know I don't.
Hey, John?
Yes, Jan.
Thank you. One thing I thought was interesting in this reading was when I was mourning and, and still do and get angry sometimes, I never really thought about that line that said, you think you're alone, but he is mourning with you? I just never looked at it that way.
As we continue the, this series, and I hope we do, I just finished up season four last night, so Darlene could have it. I am appalled at how little I realized his suffering when he was even talking to his followers. And when you read it in Matthew and in Luke, it is kind of a puzzle, but he couldn't understand why they couldn't understand. And we know the story and it's still hard to understand, but I, you know, I mean, the guy that plays Jesus, his eyes, the
right.
You know.
So expressive.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, you mentioned that about season four, because that's when he was crucified.
No.
No. Okay. So no, no, we were right, that it was later. But anyhow, you were asked about, we need to ask, right? Well, from watching it, because I've seen the last one where he's crucified. And if I got it right, at, I think the very last thing he said on the cross was, Father, why have you forsaken me?
It's one of the last seven things anyway.
And so isn't that him asking him, just like they want us to ask?
Even though he knew the plan to live through those final moments. I mean, even now, this ends, season four ends with him riding into Jerusalem, the East Gate on the donkey. And I already know what's coming, and I couldn't believe how hard I was crying because he just placed that part perfectly, just perfectly.
And what that voice said above, you can find it on page thirty-six, where it says it about the center of the page, at its core, grief is the soul's recognition that the world isn't what God created it to be.
Yep. And boy, isn't that evident today.
And then you go down to the last paragraph in that, or that last sentence in that paragraph says, he grieves with us because he loves us and because nothing we experience escapes his purview. He's right there with us.
I think sometimes that's the, if we can help somebody, I'm thinking of some situations of deaths that were unexpected. Our nieces lost their mom at a, not a young age, but they were, one was not married yet, another was maybe starting college. And they, they still have a hard time. They just don't, they miss her so much and they just don't understand why. And it's hard to, it's hard to talk. And I think this is sometimes the best that we can do is not say, well, there's purpose behind this.
Yes.
But you just have to say, yes, we mourn, and there are things, they have good memories, they have.
Yes.
I mean, they were blessed for the years they had and they know. And we lost a grandbaby seven months through our daughter's pregnancy, had to have a funeral and everything. I said, you know, we won't, we won't know this side of heaven why. But you just, all we could do is mourn with, with them and then say, God is there for the comfort. He doesn't want these things. This isn't how the world was intended with sickness and death and abuse and. The world was intended with sickness and death and abuse and.
Right.
Patriot.
If you read in Genesis, it actually tells us in Genesis that. God drove Adam and Eve out of the Garden of Eden so that they didn't eat from the tree of life, so that they wouldn't have to live with their sin forever. That death, what in God's eyes was a blessing to take them out of the sinful world.
But just knowing the the comfort.
Yes, with a sword.
And as there was, you already know, through all that too. Just like he cried in Lazarus. Cause he mourned with them.
And he wasn't mourning so much Lazarus, he was mourning. They with them because they were sad with the loss of their brother.
Yes.
Alright, well, let's go on and look. I want to talk about page thirty seven and then we're gonna have to go to the. Video soon. So if anyone had anything in the lesson that they wanted to discuss, be ready. After we look at page thirty seven a little bit, it talks a little bit about Nathaniel here and. Jesus deduced that or knew that Nathaniel was a truth teacher or speaker. He spoke the truth. And he references or the authors reference the idea that he said nothing good. From Nazareth. And then he goes on to say, he spoke this truth. He was in the habit of telling it like it is. Or more accurately, he was opinionated, perhaps prideful, a little rude and kind of prejudiced. And we could probably at one time or another tribute all of those things to us in situations that we've been in on our lives. And but Jesus knew, and it says this later on in the paragraph, that Jesus knew what made him tick and he knew what. He needed to say to Nathaniel for Nathaniel to recognize Jesus as something more than. The hip from the sticks from Nazareth, that he was. Something very special. He might not have known, well, I mean, he didn't know pretty much who he was because. It's not very long before he says that he must be the Messiah. So and then in that last paragraph there, such knowledge, such such comfort. Comfort to be so intimately known. Converted the flawed but still called Israelite in an instant. His grief and heartache forevermore to be carried by the one who saw him. The same one sees us when we're alone, when we're grieving. And before we're even aware that he's there. And so. Does anyone have a story? Similar in some way to. Uh Nathaniel's where God spoke to you in such an intimate way. That you just felt an assurance that he was there.
Last week I shared with you when my mom was dying, he was there. He was there.
I'll share one when I was not a Christian, this would have been in two thousand and six in August. When I was not a Christian, I had always, I was not a Christian because. I thought the evil in the world disproved God. How could God let such evil run rampant? And so I was driving home from work, that long trip between Dunk Creek and Eaton. And I was driving home from work. Came to the railroad tracks on four hundred south near where you live and. I stopped at the railroad tracks and it was just impressed upon me, well, how do you explain the good? Because evil, people being selfish and, you know. Looking out for number one, I mean, that's almost our cultural statement of our culture today, our mission statement. But. It's a lot harder to explain why people sacrifice for others, for strangers that they don't even know. Why all those firemen ran into the World Trade Center? Why people make choices like that? And so for me, I'm. Kind of a logic, logic-driven sort of person. So I had my logic statement and God said, well, your logic statement, I can, I'll show you how well I know you. Even though you don't know me. And talk to me in just the way that I he needed to for me to understand who he was. So.
I will think of you every time I go over that railroad.
I'm good. And it's probably frequently.
Yes.
Either at three hundred or four.
If I'm going to Muncie, I go to four hundred.
So did it just come to you at that time? Wow, was it something you saw or just all of a sudden?
It was just impressed upon me.
Were you thinking about the evil and then he just spoke to you or you weren't?
I know, I I think I was probably thinking about the evil. Cause you know, that was the whole way that God drew me to him because I. I uh, recognized that lots of people don't do the right things when they're driving. And so. I was coming home from work another time when that was impressed upon me that, you know, not, not in the same way, just. Well, most people don't do this. And I said, but. What does it matter? Whatever you do when you're driving a hundred, almost a hundred percent of the time you can get away with. So. If if there isn't some sort of good beyond just my opinion, what does it matter what I? Anyway. Yeah, we were gonna look at. Well, we'll we'll give it a shot. We'll look at these and see if we can take a look at. These two, these three verses. The first one is from question number two. Question number two, in episode two, Nathaniel is grieving under the fig tree. While we don't actually know what he was thinking about in that moment. According to Psalm thirty four eighteen, what do we know? And this is Psalm thirty four eighteen. The Lord is near to the brokenhearted and saves the crushed in spirit.
That God is with us.
We're not alone.
No.
And you know, that that's, Jesus impressed that whole bad idea right upon it. When he said, I saw you. Cause it was more than I saw you. Like when we say, I believe in Jesus, we mean more than we believe in Jesus. When Jesus said, I saw you under the fig tree, there was a lot more in that statement than just, oh, yeah, I glanced over and I saw you under the fig tree and big deal. I saw somebody under a sycamore fig tree yesterday, so it's not that big of a deal.
Do you think the fig tree meant anything? In that? Because it wasn't, did I hear at one time Adam and Eve ate from the fig tree, not an apple tree?
Well, it was, they took the fruit from the tree. But they did not say what the fruit was. But they did make clothes for themselves out of fig leaves. So it it it's, in some ways, it's representative of the fall. Yeah, Jesus cursed a fig tree as he was coming into. Well, I think as he was leaving and then the next day when they came back, the tree was all withered and. And Jesus talked about this kind doesn't bear fruit now or and said something. Cause there must have been different varieties of fig trees. And of course, the fig tree in that case probably represented Israel because they were not bearing fruit. Alright, so the next question is. According to Exodus three seven, what do we know? And so in Exodus three seven, it says, then the Lord said, I have surely seen the affliction of my people who are in Egypt. And have heard their cry because of their past massacres. I know they're suffering. Don't we sometimes feel like we're suffering alone?
Yes.
Nobody understands. And yet. You know, some people say, well, why, why human? Why did Jesus have to be human? Cause he had to know. What it was like to be a human and face. Suffering, but also the joy. What life was like.
This is kind of secondhand, but we were in conversation with a man who. Lost his father at a relatively young age and. And he was kind of questioning his mind. Does God see, does God know? Do our loved ones in heaven see us? Do we know? And he didn't wanna say yes, I think. But he said, when I was a child and I was in distress. My father would come around and throw his arm around my shoulder and say, it's gonna be alright. So he said. Very recently, he said. The thought came back to me. And he said, I felt the presence of an arm around me. And it was like hearing, it's gonna be alright. So he's kind of answering his own question. Probably the only time he felt that nearness of God, this time represented in his father. Maybe the only time he'll ever feel that. So he answered his own question. I do believe. That our loved ones know. To me, it's kind of immaterial, I. I'd rather they not be watching all this.
So I'm not the only one who thinks that.
Well, I I think that we want to think that they're watching and they're looking for us, but at the same time. I have to think that when we're in Christ's presence, that will be enough. And we won't have to look for other things to fulfill us. We'll be completely and totally fulfilled. By the presence of Christ that we no longer have to have faith to believe. Because faith is for those who cannot see, can't see. But believe, we'll be able to see, so.
That was very real to him and no doubt, he's a believer.
Yeah.
And it was experience, it wasn't the Bible. But. I think I've had two experiences where you'll just never forget the presence. Oh, that word, presence. You know, God came to. Be in the temple. I saw it, I read it in here, I think. They talk about the presence. You know, well.
The threat of the presence.
Creator of the universe, he doesn't need a house made for him. But he consented to having the temple and he came and he was there. Did he live there? Not necessarily, but the. The presence was there. It was as if God did live there. When the presence was gone. Israel was in decline. It was over. But. My friend last night, he, there was a presence.
Alright, the last question we'll look at and then we'll watch the video is. According to second Corinthians one, three and four, what do we know? And so. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of mercies and God of all comfort. Who conforms us in all, in all our affliction, so that we may be able to comfort those who are in any affliction. With the comfort with which we ourselves are comforted by God. Sounds like we have a mission. To lend comfort when we can, because we have been comforted.
Receive comfort, get comfort.
There you go. Our faith is not supposed to be static.
The beauty of community.
What?
The beauty of communities.
Fellowship. You know, even perhaps a little beyond community, relationship. Relationship with God up and relationship with. Out, so. Did anyone else have anything in our lesson this week? I talked way too long already, so. If you wanted to discuss, or thought we should discuss.
Well, one thing on page forty at the top. It was saying that uh, Jesus was rejected, betrayed, cast aside, misunderstood, mistreated. Ultimately murdered by very people that he, you know, came to save and. I never realized, never thought that, you know. We, he had the same problems as everyone else at the time. I mean, he, that's why he understands this better. But I never thought that. When he was a child and, you know, living in Nazareth. And I'm sure all the things that he went through, I never just realized that. How much trouble and sorrow that he went through.
Yeah, I I think we. We sometimes lose track of that and you're gonna see toward the end of the video today. That his life was not an easy life. As they portray it today. I mean, it's not even anywhere near the time of the crucifixion, but yet. Some of the things that we just read about and it's like, well, he's healed ten thousand people. That's probably pretty easy. He didn't have to stand on his feet for very long to do that, did he? So. Not that I gave away some of the stories. Alright, so just a reminder, if you're watching this later, the recording, here's where you can find. The Chosen so that you can watch it where this would be. The third episode of season two is what we're going to watch now, so. I'm going to stop the recording and we'll restart it again after we're done with the video.
And they're.
Didn't miss much.
I I can't imagine how draining that would have been, not just the physical pain. But how exhausting and then to come back. And all your kids are grumbling.
Well, and think about just, you know, going to a Colts game or any big. Big event where there's lots of people and just the press of people all around you and, I mean. But just claustrophobia, even if you don't have claustrophobia, being pressed in like that and he would have felt that. As long as this day went on and the people clamoring and arguing and. Anybody think it was a coincidence when he went back? And got back to uh. His people who would be his apostles at one point and what were they doing? And how many times did they do that?
You know, it's kind of funny because like I said, I was watching season four. This week and it's amazing to see their growth. I mean, this is something that you could watch every year and learn from it every year because. I've forgotten what I've seen.
Any of this one.
And we see that when we reread scripture that we've seen before, we see that same thing.
Tops to you differently.
Yeah. Yeah. And I I jotted down as we were watching, what question would you ask Mary? I mean, haven't.
Which Mary?
Which Mary?
The mother.
Mary, Jesus' mother.
Okay.
And. I I wouldn't ask her, I would ask, what was he like as a kid?
Yeah.
I mean, what was it like? Because we have one. Time when we see something about his childhood and I think that's Luke four where, you know, he. His parents have taken off to go back to Galilee and he's left there in the temple. And he's talking about being about his father's business and, you know, that that's about the only thing I could think that I would. Well, you know, what was it like growing up with them? I mean, we're all proud of our kids, aren't we, but. Some maybe have more reason than others to be proud of it.
I think. I would ask her. I'm guessing you have fear for your son every single second you're alive. How do you get through that, knowing? What other people think and may do to him? I mean, you know.
What other people think and may do to him? I mean, you know. We think our children are healthy and they're gonna have this great life and grow up, you know, and all this. But my guess would be she learned at a very early age, his life will never be that, never be that. I can't imagine being a mom, you know.
Yeah, her sacrifices.
Exactly, you know, I mean, that's like being told that your. One-year-old has cancer and they got a year. But then they live for thirty years, but every day you're thinking of it, every single day you're thinking of it.
But she had that when Gabriel came to her. You remember and Gabriel, the angel says. Your cusp, Elizabeth's gone, they're already six months pregnant and she was supposedly the bearer. And, and her response, you know, you read it, the response is. And Gabriel explains everything to her and she says, may it be as you say. So that I think she got her first indication that something special was going on. Uh, because Gabriel tells her, well, nothing is impossible with God. So I think that was the groundwork. Hoping for, get ready for what would be.
And when. Uh, they come upon Jesus in the temple and he's teaching in the temple and he says, I must be about my father's business. It says in Luke, something about uh, and she pondered.
Yeah.
Like, what is?
Yeah, what's your father's business?
Because you know, even though Gabriel told her who Jesus was going to be. He didn't tell her exactly how that was going to come about, so she sees, oh, here's a glimpse. How many other little glimpses were? Of who Jesus would be, did she see as he was growing up?
And according to this, I mean, if we don't know all those little details and how accurate, but. She was surprised when he was born, like. This is a regular baby.
Yeah, yeah.
He's, he's hungry, he's cold, he's, and you know, because she probably didn't know. If you were saying or giving word to the son of God, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know whether.
Could it be human or?
Yeah, something, yeah, exactly. You wouldn't know and, and she kind of seemed to marvel at that and thought, you know, she had a place in his life, he needed me.
And she would have known what was normally required to have a child and she would know that that hadn't happened, so. What other, what else was gonna be different about this experience?
I guess I hadn't thought too much about the disciples having, and who knows, again, some of the dialogue or whatever. I didn't think about, with all, I'm sure that was probably the case, but to some degree with all the different personalities. But I didn't think about sitting around and kind of.
Going to odds with each other, you know, when. Well, you know that some of them, James and John, their, their mother even went to Jesus and said, let them sit at your right hand. And you know that, if you were one of the other disciples and your mommy wasn't coming. And probably be a little bit resentful that, of the position she was trying to get for her son.
And, and not realizing what you are asking.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you don't want them.
You don't wanna drink from this cup, bud.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then uh. Philip gave Matthew a verse and it's from Psalm one thirty-nine and. If I can find it. Psalm one thirty-nine verses eight through ten is what I'm gonna read. If I ascend into heaven, you are there. If I make my bed in hell, behold, you are there. If I take the wings of the morning and dwell in the uttermost parts of the sea. Even there, your hand shall lead me and your right hand shall hold me. Why do you suppose Philip picked that verse as the first verse that Matthew should learn?
One thing is he was kind of an outcast among the others and it's kind of saying. You can't go anywhere that God isn't with you. So it might, if he thinks it through, which he seems to be. Overly thinking, it would maybe help him get some comfort. In direction, knowing you do have a place with it.
Alright, I, I think that's very well said, you know, it's.
So when somebody is on his side.
Right. That no matter what's going on, God is with you. And so it's a good verse for us as well. No matter what's going on, God is with us. You know, when we're in the pits of hell, I mean, maybe not literally, but when we're, you know, when we're sitting in that. Or hospital hard chair and it's shaped just perfectly so you almost slide out of. For all the time, I, I think they probably buy him special that way. You can't find any comfort at all. And even in those situations when you can't find any comfort at all. You're not alone. God is with you. Ever will I leave you or forsake you. Yep, absolutely. That God is with us. And so if you were gonna give somebody a verse. That was seeking to learn the Torah, to learn what we would call portions of the Old Testament, that's probably a pretty good one to go. I mean, we might give them something that was more about. What Christ has done for us, but they were, they were in a little bit different situation right at that point. So. Alright, so next week. We'll start by discussing our homework and this will be the homework for session three. Which is the video that we just watched and that starts on page forty-nine. And then we'll watch the fourth video and we'll have a discussion on the video and I looked ahead to know how long the video is, but. Um, are there any questions or anything else anyone would like to discuss from what we watched today?
Why do you think his mom didn't stay with him the whole time? I mean, surely, especially after Joseph died. Why didn't his mom stay with him?
We know that there were three or four sons and some uh unknown number of daughters. That she had besides Jesus.
Might have been the other way around.
He didn't want her to be there?
Why didn't he stay with her?
Maybe he left her because he didn't want. Danger coming to her.
Maybe to protect her.
Right.
And he was on a mission.
And he was thirty-three, so she was probably in her twelve. I think we can do the math there. She was thirteen or fourteen probably when he was born, so.
Yeah.
Mid to late forties or fifths. At that time, that's getting out for most people. Unless you were wealthy and they weren't wealthy, it's getting pretty late in life too, so.
Speaking as a senior citizen. She couldn't have done it. You don't. His itinerary, he was everywhere.
And he was walking. Yeah. Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
But the instincts of a mother to answer.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, probably couldn't have kept her away from that last trip to Jerusalem. Cause she had to sense it and she heard him saying it. Even if the men were, even if his disciples still didn't understand, she probably had a better idea. She saw his pain more than they would have.
All the men departed.
Gospel of John, he's the only one that says any of the disciples were there and that was John. Well, the disciple that Jesus loved, not. He never identifies himself by me. Alright, well, that's what we'll do next time, so uh let's go ahead and close in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you once again for your word and the many ways that we can experience your word, including. Watching the Chosen videos. Lord, we recognize that. They are not a perfect rendition of the lives of any of the people that we see there. Because so much is missing from the story where, that they're based on. But even so, we can draw closer to you because so much of. What we are watching comes directly from your word, your living word, your son, Jesus the Christ. So Lord, we're grateful for this way to experience it and we're especially grateful to experience. This in fellowship with other believers, that we can have discussions and it can once again. Trigger within us a desire to be more fully into your word. And come to greater understanding of who you were, who you are. And who you will be, understanding that that's the same. It's just it, as we move through life. We see you differently as we learn more and more about you. So Lord, as we continue this walk, I pray that your spirit will be upon us, that you will continue to walk with us. As we talked about, that you would never leave us nor forsake us. That no matter where we are in life, whether we're in the. When we, whether we've ascended to heaven or whether we're in the pits of hell, Lord, we love us, you care for us and you seek. Only the best for us, so we pray that you will continue to give us patience. You will continue to, to remind us to occasionally shut our mouths and listen. For your call into our lives, cause we know, Lord, that you're calling. And that we would have the patience to wait and to listen. Sometimes we pray for patience, Lord, not understanding that that means we have to be patient and that's how we learn patience. So Lord, as we go for, go from this place, I'd ask that you would surround us with your love and your promise. That your grace would continue to be poured into our lives and we would come, continue to strengthen. In your faith through your teaching. We pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.